Voting for two. The votes were as follows. Robert Cruz, 1,217. And John Schussler, 1,048. Jaclyn Brown, 1,045. There was a recount after the initial election night resulting in two additional votes from the original vote tally. Chris Borgerson, 935. Dale Scott, 527. So the two winners of that election were Robert Cruz and John Schussler. Regarding our two questions. Question one dealt with the transfer of funds, the 40 cent shift. That failed. 1,958 no's, 1,059 yeses. On the question two, which was the bond issue. Twenty-five million dollar bond issue resulting in a debt service levy of 79 cents. 1,620 no's, 1,407 yeses. Those are the results of our April 5th election. We certify that's in your packet there as well.
Okay. All right. So I need a motion then to certify these results. So you have Beth and John. Okay. Any questions about those results, the final results? All right then. All in favor of certifying the county election results, raise your hand. All right. Very good. Motion carries. All right. So at this time, we'll have Mr. Schussler come forward and take his place at the table. And then our board secretary is going to give the oath to both members, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Schussler. Yeah. You just stand right here.
Just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director.
And I will impartially and faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
Director. In and for the school district R3.
In and for the school district R3.
County of Jefferson.
County of Jefferson.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
And then you can both sign your oaths.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. So this is the time of year when we always restructure or set up new officers. So Dr. Isaacson will take over as temporary chairperson for the president's and vice president's positions.
All right. Unless the Board rejects the process for electing a board president, vice president, and subsequently treasurer, will proceed as follows. According to the state law, the annual organizational meeting of the Board of Education shall be held within 14 days after the annual board election. The newly elected members shall qualify by taking the oath of office, which we just did as prescribed in Article 7, Section 11 of the Constitution of Missouri. The board secretary shall administer the oath to the members. Following the administration of the oath, the superintendent serving as temporary chairperson shall conduct an election of the president and vice president. Once the president and vice president have been elected, the president shall preside over the remainder of the meeting. The president shall honor before, the board shall honor before July 15th, elected secretary and treasurer who shall assume their respective duties on July 15th. The secretary and treasurer may or may not be members of the board. All votes will be taken by voice, show of hands, or other method of voting, which clearly reveals each member's vote, and that is our board policy. So I, then we'll open the floor for nominations. A second will be required for each nomination. I will ask for any additional nominations. If there are none, I may close the nominations or the chair. The member of the board may move to close nominations. If seconded, this motion will require two-thirds majority for passage, which would be five votes. After nominations have closed, members of the board may vote one time for any one of the nominees. The candidate receiving the largest number of votes, plurality but not necessarily majority, will be elected. If there is a tie among two or more nominees, those nominees who did not tie for the highest number of votes will be eliminated from consideration, and the board will vote again on only those candidates who tied during the previous vote. The person receiving the highest number of votes, again plurality but not necessarily majority, will be elected. Does any board member object to this process? All right. If not, the floor is now open for nominations for president of the Hillsborough R3 School District Board of Education.
Nominate.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations for president of the Board of Education?
I nominate Robert Cruz.
Do I have a second to that nomination? All right. Hearing no second, then nomination fails. Nomination for president, any others? All right. I will close nominations for president. I have a nomination of Ms. Lisa Walker, made by Ms. Petrie, seconded by Mr. Lindhorst. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations to Ms. Walker. Nominations, the floor is now open for nominations of vice president of the Hillsborough R3 School District Board of Education.
I nominate Beth Petrie.
Nomination of Ms. Beth Petrie and Mr. Schussler, seconded by Mr. Stevenson. Any other nominations for vice president?
I nominate Dr. Director Lindhorst.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nomination of Mr. Lindhorst, I have Mr. Cruz, seconded by Ms. Oshie. Any other nominations? All right. I will close nominations. So remember now you're voting for one. So if you're voting for Ms. Petrie, don't raise your hand, you're voting for Mr. Schussler. So all those in favor of Ms. Petrie being elected vice president, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Mr. Lindhorst being elected vice president, three. Those nominated who did not tie for the highest.
Yeah, we're just gonna have another vote recorded process until somebody raises their hand.
Okay. You have to just redo it.
All right. Those in favor of Ms. Petrie for president of the Board of Education, vice president of the Board of Education, all raise your hand. Four. Those in favor of Mr. Lindhorst, three. All right. Ms. Petrie is elected vice president of the Board of Education.
Thank you very much.
And then the treasurer.
Okay. I nominate John Lindhorst. Okay. So we'll take a nomination for treasurer of John Lindhorst. So that would be Beth Petrie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Angie. Do we have any other nominations for treasurer? Okay. As the chair, then I will cease nominations. All in favor of approving John Lindhorst as the treasurer, raise your hand. All right. We have an election. Congratulations, Mr. Lindhorst. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up then would be nomination for the secretary to the board. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Betsy.
Okay.
Second.
Who said second? Thank you, Erin. Any other nominations? All right. Hearing no more nominations, then we will cease nominations. All in favor of electing Betsy as the secretary to the Board of Education, raise your hand.
Congratulations, Betsy.
All right. Thank you very much.
We were really worried for you.
Okay. So due to a change in our officers, we need to adopt a resolution that will allow us to continue using the current signatures that are in place until we can get a new bank signature card. Okay? So I need a motion to allow for this process to adopt. Thank you, John and Beth. John S. and Beth. Gonna have to do last initials there. Okay. Any discussion or questions regarding that resolution? All right. All in favor of adopting the resolution to continue with the current signatures, raise your hand. Very good. All right. We have some recognitions this evening that we would like to present. Dr. I, I believe you're going to do our teacher of the year and our support person.
Yes.
So we'll have you come up front and with your winners.
Perfect. I'll start with our teacher of the year, Ms. Andrea Gosling. So we'd like to congratulate her and also present her $500 check.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you.
One, two, three.
And I'd like to recognize our support staff person of the year, Ms. Julie Ryder from the high school.
Is Petrie waiting to? Oh, okay. Oh. Perfect. One, two, three. Three.
I heard that.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry. You turned red.
Ms. Petrie, I need you to open your eyes.
I've got glasses on. How can you tell?
Close them until I say three. One, two, and three. Perfect. Thank you.
We appreciate all you do. Our next recognition will be given to the transportation department.
So the board would like to recognize our director of transportation, Ms. Deborah Spiller, and her Hillsborough R3 transportation team, especially Mark Dobell, our district mechanic supervisor, and the DOT inspection team. After completing the Missouri State Highway Patrol's annual inspection last week, our transportation team earned a 100% approval rating.
That's awesome.
To our knowledge, this is the first 100% that we've ever received that Ms. Spiller could remember, and she's been here since 1982.
There you go.
So we'd like to call Ms. Spiller and Mark up first, and then I will call the transportation team upstairs. So we have some things for you. We're going to be recognizing.
Aww. Aww. Do you have to come up here? Now let your eggs show. There you go. Ready? Hold on, I'm gonna do one of them.
I don't have a medal.
One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Spiller, Mr. Dobell, you can hang on. We have some of your inspection. So I'd like for them to come up, our DOT inspection workers that worked that day, and it was chaotic. They did an amazing job of just, they had to go get a bus, bring it around, they'd test everything. Mark would do double checking things. They had a well-oiled system. So on that team working that day and serving was Angie Arnold, Tammy Bigman, Tom Beckelman, Kerry Chavez, Gina Klein, Melissa Dean, Ava Marler, Dave McBride, Christina Mitchell, Michael Rowden, Suzette Shuler, Jennifer Shue, and Mia Hamlin.
I don't know. Oh, wait. I don't know. I know it took early guys, but.
All right.
I don't know. Come in. A little closer. Wait, I got a medal. One, two, three. One, two, three. There you go. Thank you. Awesome. Yep, share the medal. All right. We have one more recognition, and that's from the high school. And I believe Mr. Groner is going to present that to his high school student council or about student council. Did you have the letter?
Thank you. This letter reads, "Dear Dr. Isaacson, the Honored Council Committee of the Missouri Association of Student Councils is pleased to announce that Hillsborough High School Student Council has been awarded the Missouri Association of Student Council's Gold Honor Council Award. Winners were recognized at the 2022 State Convention at Branson High School. Hillsborough High School Council was recognized for its involvement at the local level, involvement in district student council, and involvement at the state level. Only 54 student councils met this criteria for the award. The honor is based on an application submitted by Hillsborough High School Student Council. Hillsborough High School Student Council met the criteria as established by the Honored Council Committee and the MASC Advisory Board. The criteria are established to honor those councils that have a comprehensive program in promoting student activities and student leadership. Activities include school service, spirit, community service, student and teacher recognition, and leadership training activities." I don't believe either of our advisors are here this evening. One has a sick kid, and the other had a sporting event. But Brittany Imes and Elizabeth Mock are our high school student council supervisors, and they do a great job. They've done a lot with greeting our students in the morning, making sure that our staff feels welcome, and they have really upped our student involvement. So I'd just like to recognize them and say thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our next category, and that is visitors to address the board. So Lisa Jenkins, if you'd like to come forward and address the board this evening. Are you both addressing the board?
Yes. I signed us up.
Yeah, you'll only, we only do one at a time?
Oh, that's okay. I'm.
Okay. You'll each have, you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
To address the board, and according to the sunshine law, it limits our ability to respond.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Uh huh. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A group of concerned teachers from all buildings in the district came together recently to discuss the salary and welfare proposals presented at recent bond issue meetings held at each of our buildings. At these meetings, issues of salary raises, leave days, and stipends were presented as well. The presentation included proposals that were not consistent between the buildings and were found concerning to the attendees. Areas of concern included lowering leave days from the current 10 days to seven days, with some buildings reporting that three additional days would be thanked, but only seven days eligible for the stipend, so there would still be 10 days in total. Using a leave day stipend as a raise we give ourselves instead of an actual raise on the salary schedule, and a flat raise is better than a percentage raise. Because of the concern and need for clarification, the group of teachers met and created a survey to find out what options the teachers across the district preferred. The survey asked the following questions. One, which statement do you agree with? A, keep 10 leave days with the current stipend and raise added to the salary schedule? Or B, go down to seven leave days, but be paid at your daily rate and no raise added to the salary schedule? The following comments and concerns were also addressed in the survey. Within moments of the survey being sent out to certified staff, a response was emailed with stated, quote, "Option two is not correct. It was presented as $500 added to the base plus the step." So each person would have a minimum of $1,350 increase from step five on down. And an example, to figure out your personal stipend amount, add $1,350 to your salary now, then divide by 183. Take that number times seven. However, teachers found themselves concerned because those salary welfare examples were not clearly communicated between the buildings at those bond issue meetings. Out of 170 responses, 93.5%, or 159, voted for option A, keep 10 leave days with the current stipend and a raise added to the salary schedule. And 6.5%, 11, voted for option B, go down to seven leave days but pay at your daily rate and no raise added to the salary schedule. Here's a summary of the comments from the survey by category in random order. One, leave days staying at 10 days or returning to 12, but not being dropped down to seven. A change in leave days would make Hillsborough look less attractive to potential educators. It disproportionately affects teachers and their retirement, as well as teachers who need to care for family members and teachers who need maternity leave. Secondly, teachers desire a raise and do not want it tied to leave days or a stipend. Salary and leave days are two different issues and should be treated as such. Teachers are professionals and should be treated and should not only be provided their step due to them.
Sorry.
That's okay.
But your time is ended.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Uh huh. Thank you. And this is Erin Howley.
Yep. I'm just gonna continue on. Teachers desire a raise but do not want it tied to leave days or a stipend. Salary and leave days are different issues and should be treated as such. Teachers are professionals and should not only be provided their step based on their years of service in education, but also deserving a raise, especially with the cost of living rising, even deaths. We ask that salary welfare negotiations are conducted in good faith and follow approved board policy and procedure. Thank you for your time and listening to our concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll move forward then to the consent agenda. I will need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Motion. Thank you. Angie and Erin. Any discussion on any of these items as presented?
My question about the FCA. College of the Christian Athletics, did you get a response?
I did. Is if the sponsor is being paid just to supervise but is not an active participant? And if we, we can provide supervision, but they cannot be an active participant in that?
So the kids are leading the meetings, etc.
They're the adult supervisor. If the adult wants to be an active participant, then they cannot be paid to offer that to that individual, have to make that determination. So we would pay someone to supervise if there was, they don't have to necessarily engage in.
Right. Which I comprehend that, and there wasn't that information, I guess, in here, which is why I raised that question. So do you go ahead and approve or?
Do you want to amend?
Table it till next time.
You can.
Table it.
We don't have anyone hired. The question before the board is, do you want this position to provide the opportunity where they have adults who are vision at school, but the individual will not be facilitating or leading it?
They have been at school without pay volunteers. So have they been actively involved in leading the meetings? You probably don't know that.
I don't have that answer. If you need that answer, then I would like my table.
But we don't have anybody hired to run that.
No one's been hired.
To be at that position, to fulfill it.
That would be stipulated in that any, this is a supervisor versus a leading position. And if they want to lead, then they can serve in that role and be paid.
Just my opinion, I would prefer to table it until all of those are, I guess, parameters are met before just simply approving the best. Because I know from best experience that this has been an issue, not here, but in my career.
So you want to pull and table?
Well, I didn't make the motion, so.
Okay.
And I don't know how anybody else feels about that either. I think we need to be very clear on the role and its position with whatever individual decides to take it. And if we're not very clear, that's where it gets muddy.
Well, and the job description, is there a job description for it?
There would be, that's a creation.
Yes.
Have we created that job description for it yet?
Not yet, yeah. So I'm finding table.
I'd like to see the job description before we approve it.
And potentially, it was brought forth by an individual who was interested in it, and that may.
Make a difference.
Yeah, they may be like, I'd rather just participate, not be paid. If that's the case, just we'll, the board just to, it's table, but I'll, we'll pull it off, whole business. We'll get clarity on that.
I'm glad they mentioned.
So we have to, thank you. We have to amend the motion. So Angie, are you good with amending your motion? And Erin, as well? Okay. Was there something else? Did I hear somebody over here say something earlier?
I'll simply be standing since I'm not gonna be approving meeting minutes here.
Okay. That's fine. Anything else? Okay. The motion then is to approve all of the items on the consent agenda except for the FCA stipend position. All in favor, raise your hand. And John is abstaining. Thank you very much. All right. Next item is the superintendent report.
All right. A few things this month. I included the overall data.
And potentially, it was brought forth by an individual who was interested in it, and that may.
Make a difference.
Yeah, they may be like, I'd rather just participate, not be paid. If that's the case, just we'll, the board just to, it's tableed, but I'll, we'll pull it off, whole business. We'll be clear on that.
I'm glad I made the motion.
So we have to, thank you. We have to amend the motion. So Angie, are you good with amending your motion? And Eric as well? Okay, was there something else? Did I hear somebody over here say something earlier?
I'll simply be standing since I'm not gonna be approving meeting minutes here.
Okay. That's fine. Anything else? Okay. The motion then is to approve all of the items on the consent agenda except for the FCA stipend position. All in favor, raise your hand. And John is abstaining. Thank you very much. All right. Next item is the superintendent report.
All right, a few things this month. I included the overall data from our presentation from Mr. Tuttle on the stop trafficking for you to review. This is being sent out to the parents at the specific grade level or by building. So Mr. Reedauer will be sending out the sixth grade, Mr. Allison, the junior high students, and then Mr. Verner will be sending out the high school data. Then collectively, we will be sending out the data to all the parents in the district. There's a little too much to send all at once, but I kind of put it, excuse me, in a spreadsheet here. Within the board package, you can kind of view just some of the data. Quite frankly, scary.
Did you speak with Mr. Tuttle about any of that information? And I guess where I'm going with that is, you know, is this pretty typical from a percentage standpoint? I would assume it is, but.
There was, yeah, there wasn't.
No surprise, I guess.
So when I, when 90% of your sixth graders have met a stranger, that's typical, that's scary for all those parents and just the prevalence of just how students are using their cell phones and sending photos and such, and just for all those parents is like, I got a junior, and I, you know, having that conversation, 79% of juniors have viewed pornography. You know, I'm not gonna take the chance that, you know, you're burying your head in sand for like, my kids want to be 11%. And I think as parents, we all need to look and just be vigilant on that. Item number two, the Jesse Commissioner, she had her visit. They had a snow day, and they had to reschedule. She'll be visiting our campus on May 13th at Bridle Ridge and be reading to our students that day, and then touring the farm as well. Included a legislative item regarding property tax caps and freezes. On there as well, I have some additional legislative items. Actually took a phone call right before the meeting today regarding taxes. Very concerned, I brought up Russia Island before, sitting in some meetings, that's approximately $700,000 loss for the district with that closing. But that gap's gonna have to get filled up somewhere along the line, either new businesses or the port. So that's gonna impact every government entity in the county, but the number that, we could get roughly a little bit over a million, and they said to expect about a 70% loss of that revenue. So that, that's not gonna be immediate this year, but it's forthcoming when that, when that plan closes. Finally, just a reminder that the high school commencement will be at Jefferson College on May 24th. And then we also have a board meeting on May 12th for personnel, and then it'll be some open session items on that as well. That's all I have.
So be sure to mark your calendar, that's an additional meeting, the May 12th. Okay. The next category has to do with board policy. There are a few policies that are being presented as your first read this evening. We've already gone out to the committee, and they're making their reviews and revisions and sending it in. So this is only a first read, we will not be voting on these this evening. But if you have any questions or concerns, be sure and address it with. You do, okay. Sorry. So we'll address that with Dr. I. Be sure and ask ahead of time. Okay. New business then. First item for that has to do with the Board of Education Committee assignments. And we have a few openings that we'd like to fill, and if somebody maybe wants to change a committee or be an alternate possibly on some of those committees. And then we have a new committee this year that, as of now, doesn't have any members on it, would be our legislative committee. That's brand new. I don't know if you are aware of that. That's a committee we're setting up to monitor the legislative action. Plus, we're trying to include some of our elected officials on that committee so that we can develop a one-on-one relationship with them and maybe be able to communicate with them a little bit more. Okay. So there is an empty spot in the policy review, curriculum, the teacher of the year position, and in the legislative committee.
I would take the teacher of the year spot.
Beth, you said you would?
Marley's gonna be decided right now?
Well, we prefer to.
Legislative committee.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anybody else?
I'm interested in either legislative committee or curriculum.
Okay. We'll definitely put you on curriculum and. Anybody else want to be on the legislative committee? We could put John on that one, too.
Well, after my next question. Or, I wanted to propose a switch if Mr. Cruz or Mrs. Oshie is interested in moving off of meeting confer. I have some interest in serving on that committee.
Okay.
Entirely optional.
Okay. Okay. You guys mulled it over?
Don't we have something about meet and confer and having board members with relatives? Isn't there something about that, that that's why Rob and I are on meet and confer? Because?
We don't have relatives?
Conversation.
Was it a conversation?
Yes, that's the case.
There was. We have tried, we have been doing that in the past.
Right, I think it was maybe a best practice that we were trying to follow. I don't know.
Was it that, or was it we couldn't only have?
We can only have representation?
Could only have, I don't remember, because that was.
I don't know.
I don't remember the exact wording of it.
I think it, what it said was that there's at least one non-relative on.
The committee. So then it would still fall under your recommendation if one of you were to not be there, to give up your spot per se? Okay, well.
I'm willing to give in my, my spot.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Okay, we still need a policy review. Beth, you're the alternate, would you?
Yes, I would.
Be willing to move?
I don't expect any babies this year, so.
Well, that's a good point. Okay, and I could be on the legislative committee. So that would complete all of our spots. If there's something later, if you change your mind, can you contact Dr. Isaacson?
So what about?
Yeah, John isn't.
I'm on one committee.
He's on the, he's on the legis, no. He's on the legislative committee, that's correct.
You can do policy if you want.
I was, that was like beating my head against the wall.
Because we need an alternate for that, moved.
I have very strong ideas about policy, and no one else shares them, so I don't know if I'm really.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want to be on meet and confer? Let's switch it up. Rob and I will step down, you can be on meet and confer with John.
I can do that.
And Lisa.
You want to put me down as an alternate for curriculum, I'll do that, too, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. So this will be our list. Do we have to approve this list? Okay. So I need a motion then to approve the board committee, the board committee assignments for the 22, 23 school year.
Summit.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Angie. Any other discussion regarding those assignments?
Quick clarification. So legislative is Mr. Schussler, you and Mr. Lindhorst?
Yes.
So you're on legislative and curriculum and meet and confer?
No, I was hoping for either curriculum or.
Oh, you don't want both?
Yes, that was the only one I was there. Just to work, so I'm completely happy to be in curriculum.
Didn't you give the instructions before?
I'll take what everyone doesn't want.
Hey, which one do you not want?
I will take the curriculum.
I'll be on legislative.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll be able to read my notes. Okay, so we've made those adjustments, Beth. So maybe I need to read all of these, would that be helpful?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have calendar as Mr. Cruz and Ms. Oshie. Insurance is myself, Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Cruz. Meet and confer, Mr. Lindhorst, myself and Mr. Schussler. Policy review, Ms. Petrie, myself and Mr. Cruz. Wellness committee, Ms. Oshie, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Lindhorst. The legislative committee would be Mr. Cruz, Mr. Schussler and myself. Curriculum would be me and John Lindhorst. Facilities, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Lindhorst. Hawk Award and Support Staff of the Year would be Ms. Petrie, Mr. Stevenson, and then we include two former board members. Tab is Ms. Petrie, Ms. Oshie and Mr. Cruz. Teacher of the Year is myself, Ms. Petrie and Angie Oshie. With, what?
No.
No.
Okay. Just trying to.
Why, are you going out?
No. I'm not.
Okay, and then the delegate for MSBA is me and Ms. Petrie as the alternate. Same thing with the Hillsboro R3 Foundation. Okay, so everybody knows where they are, what spots they're in? Okay. So the motion then on the floor is to approve the committee assignments. All in favor, raise your hand. Very good. Motion carries. The next item has to do with the esports. I need a motion to approve adding esports as a club with the sponsor receiving level eight stipend. Motion. Thank you, Angie. Do I hear, sway over here, second. Okay, and Beth. Any discussion regarding this new club?
Angie, was he or somebody at the school for esports?
No, he didn't go to college for esports, but colleges are offering scholarships to esports programs, and there's high schools across the nation competing. And so it's just a missed opportunity for our students who are passionate about that program.
But we have high interest in it.
We have high interest as well.
Okay.
Classic.
Right.
As a board member condition.
Yes.
It's not more than that. Okay, so the motion on the floor then is to approve adding esports as a club with level eight stipend for the sponsor. All in favor? Motion carries. Next one, next item is the professional development agreement with Solution Tree. This is something new, right? Okay, so I need a motion to approve the professional development agreement with Solution Tree. Motion. Thank you, Angie and John Lindhorst. Any questions regarding this? Type of professional.
Just kind of explain the new project here.
It's a, it's a year-long professional development opportunity. Solution Tree is a nationwide provider of professional development for teachers. They're gonna come out on August the 18th, which is one of the PD days before we start school, and have an entire faculty workshop, for lack of a better term, on assessment. And the goal of that is we're gonna revisit our rigor, we're gonna revisit some of our terms that we're using in our assessment and some of our best practices. And then we'll follow up, we have four PD days throughout the school year, two first semester, two second semester. They will send two consultants, coaches, if you will, back out, and they will meet with, we're talking about having them meet with individual grade levels or departments for an hour, hour and a half. So there would be that follow-up with everybody throughout the year, and accompany with a, some resources, field assessments, five strategies, so it will take place all year long. And it is pricey, but that is restricted money that we can only use for professional development. Some of that will come from, we won't take that away, obviously, from the building's professional development money that the committee separates, we'll take it from the administrative portion and title two.
Very good. Thank you.
So with regards to the assessment strategies that are gonna be recommended, this isn't gonna be like a policy that if they're not following, they're in big trouble kind of thing, I mean, it's just sort of a guideline and support.
Teachers write their own assessments? So this is just shoring up that process, basically? It's your summative assessment that you're giving at the end of your.
Sure, but I mean, when you said you had them come in again and, you know, see how they're doing kind of thing.
And so they're working with our teachers? So they're guiding them through that process, not overseeing that? Can that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, you know, when a student taught, for instance, they had a PD group come in and, before you know it, the department head was echoing exactly what they said and telling everyone, hey, you know, get on board, and it was kind of one of those secret policy things that seemed to be snuck in there just because of the PD people, you know, kind of thing.
You know, we're gonna use this as an opportunity to shore up some of our assessments with their coaching expertise.
And part of that, what we had last in the county, like the test scores, this is one of those, we have to be aligned to be able to kind of where things get, where do you fix things? And part of that is our assessment to be able to measure that. And in order to do that, you have to have similar owner in Spanish on.
Well, and when you say test scores, you mean state test scores?
State test scores.
Okay. Any other thoughts before we go? Beth?
Well, my, so is this going to encompass the entire four days? I thought with your explanation, there was still going to be.
So I'm having discussions with how to best structure that, but it won't encompass everybody all four days. They don't, they're gonna, we're talking whether or not it'd be better for them to do two days with the elementary K through six and two days with the seventh through twelve. So it will not encompass all four days throughout.
And this is strictly for, or the PD days, it has nothing to do with the teacher work time?
Correct.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the agreement with Solution Tree for the professional development program. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. Next up is the elementary parking lot. Sounds exciting. We need a motion to approve the overlay of the elementary parking lot by Joker's Paving and Contracting in the amount of $94,420. So, John? And Beth, can I hear you? Any discussion? Okay. If there is none, then we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on Joker's Paving and Contracting taking this responsibility. All in favor, raise your hand. All right. Motion carries. We have another motion to approve the painting of the junior high lockers by electoral painting and refurbishing. by Electro Painting and Refurbishing in the amount of six thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Angie.
I'm just curious, it looked like a huge swing in pricing. Are they doing a little different than the other people or?
Yes.
It was only at the forty-five thousand.
Yeah, that was. I think that contractor is not there. Normal expertise, I bet, so they had some subcontract down there.
Any other questions about the painting of the lockers? Okay, so the motion is to approve this bid from Electro Painting and Refurbishing. All in favor? Thank you very much. Another replacement. Need a motion to approve the replacement of the junior high band floor with LVT from VCT, that's all these acronyms, by Lewis Flooring in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Thank you, John. And Beth, can I hear you? Questions regarding this bid? All right. We'll take a vote then to approve this replacement of the junior high band floor by Lewis Flooring. All in favor? Motion carries. We're all about maintenance tonight. Letter G is replacement of a roof. So I need a motion to approve a new metal roof on the old block shed at the junior high grass football field by Impact Contracting in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Thank you, Beth.
Second.
Second. Thank you, John.
That's going to be a metal roof, right?
That's what it says, yes. Last issue.
Oh, yes.
I know that there were several groups, you know, in the bond issue that didn't pass. Is this the only one that's going to be able to be done or do you expect more?
Yes.
At least by now?
The only one that's going to be, okay.
And the first, we're both talking about that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Impact Contracting was the only, only vendor, only integrator that submitted in this.
That's one of the things we're finding in this economy is it's hard to get bids. Because they're so busy. And so sometimes they're just throwing around monopoly money and if you want to do it, they're. We actually submitted or put out the RFP a bunch of the projects. And these are all going to bring them back. Just because of the cost.
All right, so the motion then is to approve the new metal roof by Impact Contracting. All in favor? All right, the next item is a discussion. We need to discuss the election results for the issues that were put on the ballot, correct? And possibly placing them on the ballot in August, which gives us a deadline to submit by May 24th, if we wish to do that. So you want to start the discussion?
Sure. With that, the fee, we need to put that back on the ballot. Is, and here's the reason why, is if we don't, in September, we'll be rolling back the, because our debt service will be by fifty cents or more approximately, which would be one point seven. It's great, we paid off our debt, are paying off our debt. And our goal was to get out of the debt cycle. Unfortunately, with this, in the short term, we have several options. Is, there's not enough money in our normal operating to pay for the level of capital improvements that are necessary to maintain a school district. But you asked a question, primary roof looks like a sin, is when an operating budget, eighty percent of that, is made up in people, there's not going to be enough twenty percent to hedge out a million dollar project. And so, and we've talked about this in the past, and that's why I went forward, is the system is set to constantly incur debt. Unfortunately, and my fear is, with the bond issue failing in April, interest rates are going up. So I don't know how that translates going forward. We may only get, I don't know, twenty-four, twenty-three million for the same exact price that we could have gotten twenty-five million. But at the very least, we need to run the bond issue in August. Partly, when I look at the results, is that was close. But it does not solve our long-term issue, which we really were trying to accomplish. Is getting us out of the school debt cycle that this has set up. Barring a, the voters just doing a straight fifty cent tax increase and moving that into operating and living with our means. One of the things, when you look at what's occurring here, some would say, great, that's, our taxes are rolling down fifty cents. Personally, that's good for John, I suppose. But the issue is, school is set up different than us in our home. If I pay off my mortgage, the school duster doesn't cut my salary by what my mortgage payment was. Right, I saved that fifteen hundred dollars and I was paying my mortgage to then fix things. In our situation, that's not what occurs. When your debt's paid off, the income, the revenue ends. So it's like a wash. It doesn't free up more money to do the roof upgrade. So you're just dealing with the money that you currently have in those pools. And why I say we need to run it now, in August, or we recommend, is once we take a fifty cent levy decrease, then you're running a tax increase. And we'll run it every election until it passes. Because that roofs are going to leak, there's going to be things that are going to need to be done. And unfortunately, that was kind of the goal, was to get those items paid for when it was upfront and then do the tax shift. I still feel strongly that we need to do the tax shift to get us out of the debt cycle. I don't know that we run both together. I think the election and the Prop P impacted us. The election turnout was literally double a normal April election. I don't think the school community got out of it. Just, the school community would, we have thirty-five hundred students and parents and whatnot and our own staff, is I think sometimes we feel like all of our friends and stuff are like, hey, this is a no-brainer. And people get busy and say, no, go. And then it doesn't pass. And so probably, and we could talk about this more in depth at the May 12 meeting, is running it as a bond issue in August. And then in the April election, doing the levy change as a separate item there. And so I'll have a year to further educate our community to believe that and that, that will help get us out of the debt cycle and set aside that, that money and capital, that million dollars a year. Absent of that, we need to continue in the system how it's set up. We do not have the money to not run a bond issue and rely on our current operating expenses of three twenty-seven or three thirty-seven, we have a diamond gap, to maintain the school district. It's just, and that's not doing extra things, that's just a roof's two million dollars. I mean, what's going to go on at the primary is two million dollars. Then the board is having discussions as to how do you address those issues? And so already, and I don't have it queued up here, maybe I do, no, it's in the executive. But next meeting, I'll actually send out an email to the board, I'll send it out to the staff too, is we're, we're already putting higher than the state average in our instructional, our capital is smaller. So in order to increase our capital, we're taking from someplace else. And our long-term and short-term debt is right in the same wheelhouse and we actually have less on the capital and land acquisition and such as that than the state average. So according to the ASBR, our FAD is in our people, which is, right? That's not where we're going to get that from. And so that's, we're going to have, we have to pass them up. When I say have, or we're going, the district is going to be very challenging to then run a tax increase. And, I mean, DeSoto ran that and they ran it as a tax increase with fifteen hundred dollars going to their teachers. And only, they lost like twenty-five percent, yes. I mean, they got hammered. And so that's why it's so important that we pass it. It's going to take our entire teacher and staff. As the board, I'm just pleading, myself going to Rain Tree and stuff and all that isn't going to pass. It's going to take everyone or everyone. That's just, it's going to take four hundred and forty people. And even that, Josh had most of his staff is, and this, inflation's going up for everyone. But that's what we're looking at. So that's where I also, not to be doom and gloom, it's like, if we pass it, like, it needs to be two steps. I wish we could put both on because the plan like works together to get out of the debt cycle long-term. Because there's a chance the bond issue will pass because people like shiny things. But the true solution to not having to take debt in the future is that second item where you're transferring funds into capital and paying as you go. We're asking for that money that we're normally paying in a mortgage, we paid off a mortgage. We're asking to keep the revenue, but earmark it for fixing things. And that's what failed. And absent of doing that, we will continue to ask for bond issues and bond issues. Yeah, that's how it.
But then how many of us are doing that?
But we have to, because we're going to lose fifty cents, it's about what, one point, at least fifty cents, approximately one point seven million. Now, that's going towards debt, but that's, that's what's going to have to get voted. And people's taxes will go down, fifty cents is a big issue, you know? To have that go back up. If we, or.
If it goes down.
Or until it passes.
Right, okay.
We're just, we need to stay the same. It costs, we're going to still recommend going down probably a nickel in September, even if it had passed. To go down that significant, it's going to be hard to increase people's taxes by fifty cents. Because it's going to make a big difference on the tax. So.
So we talked about wording of that question. Instead of shifting it, we said increase by forty cents?
Well, we, it was increasing the operating.
Right, that, that pot. But I don't know how many people saw that word increase.
They saw this.
And they went, no.
It was the first item there. And they were there to vote against another non-school issue. And I think, just the topic in December, who knew there that there would be that opposition? And there was a vote no on Prop P, it was on a blue side. You know, right when you had off Highway 21. And we lost resoundly in Rain Tree. The city of Hillsborough, both items, I believe both items were passed. The bond issue for sure, and the other one's much closer. Rain Tree, Hillsborough Community Church, lost some.
So from a voter education, community education perspective, can you clarify? My understanding is there's some legislation that requires that we don't tell as a political subdivision, as a district, certain things about what we want to honor population, our own population. Can you clarify what that is, where that ends?
Sure. I, as superintendent of the school district, can provide informational items. I can, in the district, we can send, hey, this is what the district is doing, but not say vote yes or no. As an individual, not working as.
Not your capacity as board member though. I mean, it's illegal for any government agency to try and influence the outcome of the election.
John Isaacson, sitting on my back deck, visiting with somebody, be like, hey, this is important, not acting in my role as superintendent. If I'm going out to Rain Tree to visit with them, John Isaacson, the resident, doesn't go to Rain Tree very often, just to attend the board. So in that, I'm acting as superintendent. It's going to take, it's going to take the teachers and our classified staff. I think it makes a big difference coming from staff rather than Dr. Isaacson, the superintendent, of course, he's supposed to be here.
And that's the second half of my question is, can we, or have we in the past entertained an idea of having like a task force that has the limited charge of bringing relevant and timely information to the community from that perspective? And that's something that.
That'd be my recommendation, if the board decides to do this, I think we have to. It's going to change some of the bond projects. Because we're going to get into, the community may not want something that we had originally. I think everybody wants a turn lane, but everything else, they may say, we don't want that and we're, need to get it passed. And so inquiring on that, and then also, almost like I'll have to have classes with those that are going to be on that task force to be able to explain it in layman's terms and not school finance terms. But absolutely, I think there has to be a committed group of individuals, and it's donating.
Well, how much does it cost to put it on the ballot? I know we're kind of good with the August primaries, you're not, it's not a bad deal, but.
I wouldn't put it on November regardless, that's a bit too expensive. But it's. It ranges from.
Ten, thirteen thousand a year is about what it would be. Would that hurt?
I mean, next August, it'd probably be a lot worse because you might be the only thing on the ballot. That could get hurt.
And voters will be down.
But it's a primary, so voters are going to be out. County executives, big race.
And mind you, on that topic, I mean, more voters, I mean, that, that should be a good thing.
Sure, absolutely.
That's why it's so important that we have.
Information now.
And it's important.
But at the same time, I, I wonder if we're really, being the only person on the board right now who's from the community solely. It gets irritating sometimes to have government agencies look at the voters and say, well, they made a dumb decision. You know? Let's keep asking them until they get it right. It is, well, it's not just irritating. I mean, it's part of that community government divide right there. And so I'm fearing, I mean, from one thing, I'm hearing that this isn't a long-term solution and I agree, to just go into debt again. And also, the state system is set up in a dumb way. It was a horrible law when they passed it that said, school districts, you need to be in debt pretty much forever in order to really do, I mean, why would you do that? So to me, we're not even really addressing the big problem, you know, we're just trying to deal with the symptom of a bad law. If we're going to educate voters, why aren't we educating them about what the state's doing? I never hear that, ever. And I don't, I don't want to be prickly about it, but it's just, that needs to come up.
Well, the thing is, here's, is.
Because the state legislature isn't getting any flack over this, you know? They're not getting told, hey, why do we have this in place, can we change that? You know? Just saying, it has to flow from the ground up or it never gets changed.
Well, and that's where our new legislative committee hopefully.
Would be very useful, sure.
Yes.
Sure. At the end of the day, with that, is the only way to truly free, like I get what you're saying, you talk about like the state test. Even going back several years ago, when we had an issue that dealt with federal government. The only way to even have. The only way to even have full autonomy and not like, hey, we're not gonna deal with the state. This is Paul Atticheck, to literally run, Hillsborough School District wants taxpayers. We don't want the federal government to tell us what to do, we don't want state government. We're gonna pay eight dollars, because the cost of the cause is.
But you know, you might be surprised, you might get more votes for that than a bond issue right now.
Sure.
I, I mean, you know, my, my point being is, if the community says something you don't like, do you just keep going until you get what you want? Or do we finally deal with what the community is telling us? Rather than treating them like that stingy uncle who has a ton of money that they can spare, and they just don't wanna give it to a good cause.
Or we educate them better to understand.
Well, that also true, but you need to be, what if they do understand?
Do we cut, not ever put a roof on the primary building? Come on.
But everybody is gonna have to, I mean, and again, I think with our current economy, everyone's gonna have to come to face with the fact the matter is, our standard of living has been above, it, it's been borrowed from future generations, a lot of it. And that's why we have inflation. So, some of us are gonna have to start coming down. Do, when do we deal with reality? I guess my question is, if the voters truly and utterly, as much as you wanna educate them, say, no, we, I understand, but no. What point do we deal with reality instead of? Because the longer we don't, the worse it's gonna be when we all of a sudden have to cut everything. Rather than preparing ourselves for, oh, we might not get this.
And that's my point. Because me here, I'm not trying to tell anyone that they're stupid. My job is.
Sure.
When, in the, like, I mean, my job is to inform the board that when you get a phone call that, why is my seventh grader getting water dumped on their head in the cafeteria? That's why? You know what I mean, like?
Sure.
Is to, this is the fact as to how the money works. And we can move different, but there's impacts to each. Is, the board may say, we don't wanna put on the ballots. That's the role of the board, but also, these are.
And there's different ways of managing the money we have. I mean, if we're filling every pothole, maybe we decide, you know, we don't do that, or, you know, whatever. I mean, at some point, if we come to the reality that, and like I said, I think a lot of people are gonna have a come to, you know, reality moment where they're gonna have to say, these things, it was all nice to have it all, all the time, but sacrifices are gonna have to be made at some point. Because the money just, the riches aren't, the assets aren't there.
So you want the teachers to start putting buckets on their pockets?
You see, and, and that's a false equivalency, though, to say that me wanting us to deal with reality is the same as being Mr. Scrooge and saying, you have to put buckets there. If the money isn't there, the resources aren't there, they just aren't there, guys.
Well, that's, I get what you're saying, and we've talked about this at length, and I don't. But, the issue is, it truly is that, before we're gonna be able to impact the state, it's gonna impact a child in a classroom. And, one of the things that schools and other, even like our fire department, is, we're the lowest level of government that people have access to. And we're the biggest number on the tax bill. I totally get that. But we're also the one where people have expectations that.
That are unreasonable sometimes. I think our expectations have outrun what a school district can do, personally. I mean, it, a lot of these expectations, I think, are quite, it makes a teacher's life miserable. It makes the school board's decisions difficult.
But what we're talking about is just capital items. And so in order to address that, the tightening of the belt, truthfully, will be people.
That's no name, we've done that over the course of the years.
I mean, if property market crashes, and it very well might, because we're talking a bubble that's easily makes the, the financial crisis bubble look like peanuts. I mean, we're still gonna have to tighten our belts, you know. I, I just fear that this is a reason, you know, this is a way of trying to defer what we should be discussing early rather than late, which is, what happens if we have to, if we have to tighten our belts? You know? So, that's, that's my say, it's my two cents.
I would agree, if we haven't been tightening our belts. This, this district's in a better position than it's been in.
And I'm happy with that. I'm happy with, unfortunately.
And I also wanna clarify, this isn't wants. I don't think any of us wanted to spend millions of dollars on roofs. These are needs.
Some of them are.
So we're not.
But I mean, not everything that is getting spent money in the district is a need. I, I hate to say it, but when I went to school, half the stuff we pay for now didn't, I mean, air conditioning. We just, no parent's gonna want that, but it pretty much wasn't in the middle school where I went to, you know? And I had to be in the high school just because it was so cramped, you know, but.
And the horses and cars, they didn't take that. But things have changed.
Things have changed, sure, but my point being.
Do what we can to help our kids progress, give them every opportunity. If that costs money, I, you know.
Even, but it's not, costing money, it costs somebody. And with inflation hitting everybody's pocket, some people don't have that. I'm just telling you, you know, if you want to get the money for what we're looking for, you're gonna have to come down to where they live. You know? At some point in hard times, you're gonna run across a wall and people are just, they're gonna be so tired of it, the trust is gonna be gone. It's already eroded somewhat.
I move that we do put this on the ballot in August with more education.
I don't know, I don't know that. We can do that in May.
Oh, in May. And yet, well, the other question I.
May twelfth, the board meeting.
Yes. Oh, because you don't wanna do this tonight?
Well, I don't, I was just.
It's just language discussion.
Okay, it wasn't a motion. Because with the education, in August, we'll know really what the public wants. Okay, well, I say that's a good stopping point. I'm gonna move on then. We'll get to our last item, which has to do with purchasing a camera system for our buses. Safety measures. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of a camera system for buses in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred, forty-four dollars?
Motion.
Thank you, John.
Sorry.
Sorry, Rob. And then John, did you? Eric, couldn't tell. Okay, you wanna explain anything about these cameras, please?
Actually, I would like to, it is, to, I guess it was probably right after, when there was a bus accident in Jefferson County. For a student at R seven. It was a fatal accident where he ran out in front of the bus horn. And that got some local Hillsborough gentlemen kind of inquiring and looking into some things. And they contacted me and were like, hey, we wanna do some market, just kind of market research. Research of, it seems so simple. Like, vehicles around the country have like backup cameras. Side cameras and front cameras. And so, worked with them, save, they created a company, Safe Assist Innovations. I don't wanna necessarily, they actually came tonight, I invited them to come tonight. We actually have the bus outside that we worked on, but not me, I didn't do anything. Worked on to kind of go through and show what these views, and basically what they've done is they installed a camera on the front and the back of the bus, on either side of the bus. So literally, and I think, I don't wanna, is it in here? Literally, in each of the buses, our goal was, I didn't put this out with the bond issue, because it wasn't, we're still looking at it, is literally, we can retrofit our buses to put these cameras in them, is, you literally would have, on the monitor, like sitting, almost like where the fans are. I think it would be up top, is a nine-inch monitor. Nine-inch monitor, that from it, you can see a three sixty view around the entire bus. From, so.
Huh?
From the side. So literally, you can see. And so, I think, I'm gonna go to your.
Yeah, it's, so it's a sky view, it's a bird's eye view camera. So essentially, it takes all four images and uses technology to stitch together an image. So if you've been in a truck like mine or like Dr. Isaacson, you can see all the way around your vehicle. So, so you have the four views, and then you also have the, you know, that, that line, just like you have in your car. And then you also have those hidden spots. So, you're gonna see in the mirrors, but the driver may catch a shadow or may catch an image and say, hey, let me clear my mirrors again. So this isn't a full, you know, a single safety solution. This is adding yet another tool or resource to the, to the driver's, you know, hip pocket there. So these also are recording the entire time they're on, similar to the cameras inside your bus. So if someone claims that you hit their car, backed in their car, you now have substantiation that you did. So, you know, bus accidents, there have been a thousand thirty bus accidents since two thousand and eighteen, according to Missouri State Health. You guys have seventeen, you've paid out nearly a hundred thousand dollars in claims since two thousand and eighteen. So, you know, we started this company just to work with Dr. Isaacson and the garage team to see if this was even something doable. And it turns out, we went through several different versions of this. We tested microwave sensors, we tested all this stuff, and ultimately, this is what we came up with. So on the left there, what you're seeing, this is inside the bus garage, and I never looked with the light and stuff, but you can see the whole view all the way around. And then this camera here is live all the time. So when you're driving forward, it's showing you forward view. When you hit your left blinker, it's showing you what's on the left. You hit the right, same. And then the back, when you go into reverse, it shows you behind you, so. That's kind of what, what we figured out. And we had a lot of help from Mark and the team, just understanding the inner workings of the bus and, you know, setting these things up right to where they, they get us the best image. So, that's where they're at. And we had this thing outside.
And so this is the video. Yeah, that's where he's walking in front, and you see the three sixty view, and you'll literally.
Yeah, you'll see me come back on the side right there, up in the front corner. And then walk around the bus. Now granted, we're in a real tight, you know, horrible light space right there. And that's the, that was Mark's team when they were working on the inspections.
And so you can literally see him walking around. Like, when I saw this, I thought like it's a primary and stuff like that. You literally will be able to see kids running on either side of your bus while you're sitting there. And, this is retrofitting current buses that we have, and the equipment then can be taken, like when we sell a bus, can be moved to the new bus.
The new bus. So is it using cameras already in place mostly?
No, they're installing new ones. These are installing, I'll let you explain that.
Yeah, so we work with a direct source vendor in Shanghai. We don't, we don't use boat shipping, so it's not taking sixty or ninety days to get here. We're getting this stuff in twenty days. It's the same stuff that anybody else here locally uses. The difference, so when you guys order a new bus, the only option you have now on the bluebird is a backup camera. And I'm not sure exactly what they're paying for those backup cameras, but there are little tiny cameras inside the mirror that the bus drivers don't even care about, because you're not really using them anyway. They don't tell you anything. This is what we're doing, we're creating this professional installation concept. And this is actually your bus on our website. So, we really brought it up here to kind of show you guys. It's a little low light out there right now, but we can definitely walk through it and get an idea of what's going on. My first board meeting, I didn't realize I was gonna be here for four hours, but.
Sorry.
Nothing with you guys. So, but this is just what we wanted to show you today. And this image that you're seeing right here, this is what you see on the, on the, on the recording. So this is the recording, it's a USB recording, just like the internal cameras. So if you have an incident on the bus, you go pull the thing out, download it to your computer, show it to the police officers. And actually, I was talking to Debbie, I don't know if she's still in here. So, you guys have a struggle with stoplight camera offenders, right? So you have to be able to prove that you have a picture of the guy, you have a picture of the license plate, you have a picture of the back license plate. So with us having a camera on the back, a camera on the side, and a camera in front, you're catching three separate images of this couple's, this person's driving by. So, we should be able to zoom in, and we're gonna test this theory in the parking lot. We're gonna fly by in the, in the parking lot down at the bus garage.
So what's the capture rate there? Because I, I had a guy who got a security camera, you know, and he was looking to see if he could, even if you zoomed in on the guy, we're traveling at like two miles an hour, it was so bad.
Yeah, these, this, I don't know if they're captured it, but these are 4K base cameras. These things are unbelievable and it's. We were gonna, so this is kind of a last minute deal today. So we were gonna bring up some videos and show you, we got the bus out here. But, but this is just it, this is introduction to this system right now, so. We were gonna outfit the whole, the whole bus garage, that was the original plan. And then Dr. Isaacson asked us, so we've given you one of these, right? So we've put one on to take care of it. We're gonna try to do four more here for you, so you have a total of five, and then you can get them out there and show people what, you know, the technology, so.
And so is this all new? I mean, like, is there any other company doing this?
No companies around here, there's that, you'll find some fleet companies. They focus heavily on the stop sign cameras, because they're a commission-based, you know, system. So they get a commission based on the number of tickets that they sell. So they don't, they don't care about this, because they're not really caring about your safety. They're caring about the commission that they're gonna get off the stoplight cameras, so. Stop sign cameras, I should say, so. From, as far as I'm aware, there's nobody that does this around here. There are, there's a company that deals in microwave sensors, but it's like an auto, like an auto company that, you know, they, like Fine Designer somebody, not them, but a company like that, who would come out and do microwave sensors. But no, this is our deal.
So since this is so new, is there a reasonable way to gauge a warranty or a shelf life on these things?
So, that's a part of our proposal to you guys. We, we're offering a full service protection plan along with our bus transfer labor rate. So if you call us up and say we're buying a new bus, we're gonna come out, you know, for the labor fee, and we're gonna transfer it over. If it's within the initial protection window, we're offering like three levels of protection. If it's in the initial protection window, we'll go through and just replace, you know, move it over. If anything is broken or not, you know, not working properly, we'll replace it, repair it, whatever we have to do. If it's outside the window, we'll do an inspection on it first, and then we'll tell you if it's, if it's good or not. Or, you know, if they come out with an 8K camera between now and then, we'll look at what the upgrade fee would cost instead of moving the camera, so.
What kind of window were you thinking?
Three, thirty-six months, three years. But the transfer fee is lifetime, as long as it's an operable system, it's lifetime. You know, if you, if you move that thing seven years from now, if you get a new bus. But I think you do what, a couple buses a year maybe, depending on what your, you know, what grant money you're getting and stuff, so. Yeah, that's where we are.
So.
You guys like to see it?
This is, like I said, started with an idea, after that, we just, they've worked through it. I've just been kind of facilitated, working with Mark, and it's turned out.
I will mention, it did pass, one of our biggest hurdles was Department of Transportation. We wanted to make sure that putting a monitor in the side of the driver was not an issue. It passed, Mark walked it through the whole inspection, and he physically walked them through the cameras, the monitor, the wire, and everything that we had, and they were perfectly fine with it, so.
That's great, thank you.
They're impressed, because they're like, yeah, that's, it's like a no-brainer, or something like that, so. And as far as, I've had, Ed Plus would no doubt be picking it up. And I've visited the Ed Plus meeting, numerous superintendents in the area. I've actually just been kind of holding off on it too, as well, send out a press release before we do that, and just kind of, I know that just some other local districts are very interested as well.
So the plan is to outfit four buses, out of our forty buses that we have? Okay.
That'll give you a total of five.
Okay, because one's already outfitted. But this, this price that we looked at this evening is for four additional buses.
Exactly.
Okay. And that's why those other buses, we want to include in the bond issue.
Well, it would, I mean, we can't spend.
Sure, I get that. But that's a huge safety factor, huge. Okay, any other questions? So the motion on the floor is to approve the purchase of a camera system for the buses in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred, forty-four. All in favor? Motion carries, very good. I think your idea is great. Thank you for letting us be a part of it.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our open session for now. I need a motion to recess open session, because we still have a few executive items to take care of. Thank you, Angie and Eric. All in favor? Thank you, Angie and Eric. All in favor, raise your hand. All right. We'll take the five-minute break, and then we'll come back and go back into executive.
I don't give it's time to see the bus.
Well, yes, because I say, field trip. Field trip. Field trip, we're running.
Do it.
Field trip, you didn't have this.
How are you serving?
Good, how are you?
Good.
We'll do this. Yes, yes, and then we're all good. We'll do executive, and then we'll adjourn.